So first order of business, if you have an electronic device with you, please turn them on silent or on airplane mode so they do not disrupt the meeting. And second, please join me in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm going to start with introductions. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor. And to my left are council members Pam Mortenson, John Chumperland, Ann McGregor, and Kathleen Refkin. Staff present this evening as I'm going to continue to my left here. We have our city engineers with WSB. We have Allison Fowski and her sidekick. And also engineer Adam Gabois. I just had to add that. And then we have Don Matzko, who is our city clerk behind them. And next to me on my right, we have our finance director, Brian Grimm. Ally Palfus is our administrative director. And then we have David Abel, who is our community development director. And Sarah Sosanka Sensalis is with Kennedy and Graven. She is our city attorney and then sitting in for the chief this evening. And although the lieutenant was sitting in for the chief, so Pat, you're third now. So Sergeant Cummings is with us. With that, I believe that is everyone. Is, are there any changes or additions to the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Any further questions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Our first order on the agenda is a special presentation by our city finance director, Brian Grimm. Thank you.
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor and Council. And I'll try to be brief because I'm assuming everyone who's here is probably not here to hear me talk about the city finances. But we'll do a quick rundown of basically the fourth quarter, year end 2021. So this is on pages three through 18 in your packet. So maybe just to highlight in the memo, so as far as our overall revenues, we ended up coming in about $35,000 better than our budgeted amounts, you know, so pretty, pretty close actual to budget. Our building permit revenue was slightly higher. I think we had a really good last month or two where their permits really came in to push us over the top there. I've noted in our, in the memo that with some of the market activity, we actually show a negative market value adjustment in our interest, but that's pretty much been the case for the whole year based on, I think a lot of cities have that or entities with the current investment market. Our expenditures in the general fund, we came in slightly less than budgeted, about $42,000 less, so then other good variance there. Biggest positive variance there was in the snow ice department, which obviously is weather dependent. We didn't quite need to use as much snow removal as what we had budgeted from 2021. So we ended up with the general fund revenues of basically a little over $5 million, $5,011,000 roughly. And the expenditures in the general fund were $5,151,000. So we ended up using about $140,000 in fund balance. But just to remind everyone, the final 2021 budget, we had projected to spend down about $217,000 in fund balance based on the current dollars we had in the fund. So I think all in all, the, as I mentioned, the, our auditors are here this week, so these are preliminary unaudited numbers, but I don't envision anything changing too much between now and when our final audited financial report comes in the month of May. So I'll probably stand for any questions, I guess, if council has any.
Counsel, questions? I have a couple. On page five, under property taxes, it says that we received $14,000 more in property taxes than budgeted. How did we do that? That's great, but...
Delinquent collections from previous year.
Okay. And then also same page, bottom line, it says other. And we had budgeted $58,000, other from what? What was, do you know what other is?
Other on page five, that's grouping some of those categories together. Mainly that's investment revenue and some like refunds, reimbursements, insurance reimbursements, that type of thing, so.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. That's all the questions I had. And with that, then thank you, and we'll look forward to that audit.
They're fun.
They're, yeah, I know. They are so fun. And so, yeah, so fun. So next we move on to persons to be heard. We'll start with Steve, is it, I'm sorry, on Game Farm Road.
Steve Shower.
Shower. Thank you. Can you, so with persons to be heard, when I call your name, you'll have to come to the podium here and then state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to address the council.
Okay. I am Steve Shower with Shower and Sons Construction in 10344-118th Street, Glencoe, Minnesota is our address. And we're proposing attaching the Bernstein's existing garage.
Okay, are you talking about the variance?
Yes.
Okay, that is actually on our consent agenda?
Oh, okay.
So I think, I think you'll be fine. Yeah. Well, you were signed up here, so that's why. So you probably don't need to speak if you don't want to.
Okay.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Do you have anything to add to?
We're attaching the house to the existing garage.
I think we're good, so. If we have questions, we will let you know on that issue. Thank you. All right. So next we have Steve Decolius.
Good evening.
Yeah.
Name Rankin.
Yes, please. Is it sergeant or major? No, just kidding. Yeah.
5415 Yellowstone Trail, Anarista. My name is Steve Decolius. So I want to ask some questions about the water situation. In the packet, there's something that has to do with Woodland Cove Sixth Edition. It's on the approval for the agenda tonight. I noticed on their proposed plat that they've moved the city park from the southeast corner of that area to the northwest corner. It appears to be larger. Is it still the intention to look at putting in a water treatment facility there with two wells?
So I, I think myself and maybe some other council members kind of questioned what the layout that was in the packet. It's confusing and it's actually not accurate. So right now...
The diagram's not accurate. The narrative's not accurate. The plat has nothing to do, this plat that is being approved has nothing to do with the southeast corner. That's a future phase. We're in the process of getting write-up entry from MNI. This is Ganya that's on the agenda tonight, so the land isn't questioned. So this isn't the southeast corner of the... That is, but the city park is mislabeled on there by Ganya. That's their narrative. That's not the plat. That's just a diagram in their narrative. Right, okay. And that, that city park that's been moved is, as of now, that is not going to be a city park where they have the spoils.
So to answer your question, we're still moving forward with test wells in that corner. It won't take up the whole park, but we're still moving forward with that.
And then, do you have an update on the discussions with St. Bonnie about buying water?
Not yet. Yeah.
And I know that SEH Engineering put together a nice presentation with Gary and the rest of the team to bring the south water facility up to 1,000 gallons a minute. Is that going to be implemented as proposed?
It's going to be implemented immediately.
As proposed?
Kathleen, Kathleen and I met with city staff and our engineer and, and an engineer, I'm sorry, with the engineer from SEH, so we will be reporting on that later on.
Tonight?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Then we have Berks, Berks, Berkston?
I'm sorry, I did the same, I signed up.
Okay, so you're with the variance, okay.
All right.
Did you folks want to say anything? Okay. So with that, that's everybody that's signed up. So we will now move on to our next agenda item, and that's our consent agenda. So the, you folks and the folks in the back there are interested in this. The consent agenda items consists of a number of things. I just read them off. Are there any consent agenda items you wish to remove? All right. So once the consent agenda items are approved, your variance and your variance will then be approved. Okay? So with that, consent agenda items include approval of our special meeting minutes from February 15th, 2022. Approve our work session meeting minutes from February 22nd, 2022. Approve the city council regular meeting minutes from February 22nd, 2022. D is approve our claims. E is approve a reestablishing the precincts and polling places. F is approve the step increase for public maintenance worker, Jack Strauss. G is approve a step increase for police officer, Nathan Heinz. H is approve, accept the resignation of Kevin Walsh, our community service officer. I is approve a front yard setback variance and side yard setback variance at 6800 Game Farm Road East. And J is approve a lake shore setback variance and side yard setback variance at 6120 Pine Circle. And K is Woodland Cove Sixth Edition. KI is approving the final plat. And I two, I guess, or K two would be authorized execution of the subdivision agreement. And consent agenda item I is a Woodland Cove Seventh Edition, same thing. I one is approve a final plat. I two is authorized execution of a conservation easement agreement.
That's L. It's L, not I.
Oh, thank you. There's so many. With that, A through L. Thank you, Kathleen. Is there a motion to approve those consent agenda items?
So moved.
Thank you, Pam, and thank you, Ms. Refkin. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So next we have our public hearing. This is a public hearing for the proposed assessments for the 2022 street improvement projects. This is city project O1-22, and it's for a street improvement project for the Jennings Cove area. I'm going to hand this over to Adam, maybe at the, no?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Normally I step up to the podium, but if I may, I think we spoke to most of the people here. I'm not sure that anyone is here for the hearing.
Right.
And usually I go through a more in detailed description of the proposed work that is available on the city's website under construction projects for anyone listening at home. So if the council's all right with it, I'll just kind of briefly touch on the area being improved, and we can roll right into the assessment hearing because everyone's so familiar with it.
Right. Okay.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. At the February 7th meeting, the council declared the cost for the 2022 street improvement project and called for an assessment hearing to be held tonight, which follows the Chapter 429 state statute because the city is proposing to fund a portion of the project costs via assessments. The city's assessment policy says that, the city's assessment policy assesses for 50% of the total street and storm sewer improvement costs, which amounts to $301,800. In the neighborhood of Jennings Cove, which includes Jennings Cove Road, East Cove Lane, Cove Circle, West Cove Lane, and Upper Cove Road, there are 40 homes proposed to be assessed, or 40 properties, one of which is the city park. And the residential unit assessment rate was calculated to be $7,545. In your packet this evening is the proposed assessment role, as well as an assessment map detailing the properties. And we invite anyone who's here to speak on it, to ask questions about, about the assessments to the council.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're all familiar with that, so what I'm going to do is go right to the public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak for or against the assessments or has questions regarding the assessments, you can do so at this time. I don't, I don't think anybody's here for that, so.
You want me to just have Sarah?
Oh, okay. Anything you want to add, Sarah?
Sure, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'd just like to remind the public that this is an assessment hearing, and if you do wish to object to your assessment, you must put your objection in writing and sign it and provide it to the mayor at this public hearing, unless you have already filed it with the city clerk prior to the hearing. Any objection to an assessment not received at this public hearing will be waived. If you do file an objection, you need to appeal the assessment to the district court within 30 days after the council's adoption of the assessment role tonight.
Thank you. All right. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing. So we're now closed, and I'm going to take it back to the council. I'm looking for a, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the assessment for the 2022 street improvement project, city project number 01-22. I believe it's in the amount of $7,554. Is that correct?
Forty-five.
Forty-five, okay.
And then the only other, yeah, I mean, obviously the property owners all know it's at a 20-year assessment at 4%, and that's all been discussed at previous meetings.
All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Chumperland. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Next, we'll move on to our business items. Number A, it's approve the supplemental agreement for professional services for the 22 pavement forensic study. I believe that's Mr. Gabois again.
Yes, it is. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Now, the first supplemental agreement here within your packet this evening is for the pavement forensic study, which is just kind of a fancy way to say coring proposal. But in addition to the cores as the proposal details, we'll be providing a memo slash report that discusses the findings, includes pictures of the cores, and then discusses options for rehabilitation. So that's why we've got the fancier name. But the neighborhoods proposed were discussed at the work session on February 7th, and they're listed here. They should take us through potentially 2024 for reconstruction work. And we wanted to kind of keep within that range of coming back in another couple years with another coring proposal, so they don't sit on the shelf for too long where we can't trust the information that's found. So the neighborhood, or the streets in the neighborhoods are listed here. We're looking at approximately 33 cores, but our field technicians, when they're out there, will, you know, plus or minus here or there depending on the conditions that they're finding. If they're not able to find uniform cores, they might take a couple extra. Or if they're seeing very consistent cores, they might take a few less. So the work can take place right after approved if the council chooses, and then we'd have a report quite quickly. A couple of the streets listed are proposed for the next supplemental agreement, which is the 2022 overlay project. So as soon as we get that information, the sooner we can get that information, excuse me, the sooner we can get into design for the 2022 overlay project, which is the next item in your packet. I can take any questions on the proposal on pavement forensics or coring at this time.
We can do the coring in winter?
Yeah, we can do the coring in winter. The prices that you see in the proposal are slightly increased due to the time it's going to take to go through the frost, but absolutely can do it in the winter.
Counsel, other questions? So I had a few. We haven't really talked about whether or not next year, or maybe even the following year, we're going to do any MSA project. And so the, these, the corings that we're doing are for our city street projects. They don't include MSA. I'm just wondering, have we thought about the next and/or what the timing would be for our next MSA project? Should we be doing those corings at the same time? Would we save some money?
Sure. Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, for the question. Like I mentioned, I think it's wise to kind of get just a few years of corings at a time. The MSA routes that I know staff has discussed, and I believe have been brought up with conversations with the council, would be Hunter's Trail, as well as, I believe, maybe quite a bit longer than our last meeting, but North Arm Drive was spoken about as well. So those are two on our radar. And if we plan on using any MSA funding, we will likely be making larger changes to those roadways. There might be utilities that we haven't factored in yet. So we want to pursue borings in addition to corings. And so we'd go down, you know, five, 10 feet, depending on what the proposed work is with those borings, and take corings at the same time. So we'll be going back for more pavement forensics at that time for those projects anyway, so I don't think there's any lost or cost savings with not including those now.
Okay. So then the other question I have, we've talked about North Arm, and I know that's going to be a huge challenge. When we talk, I don't know when you're planning on bringing back that CIP, the five-year CIP, but when we talk about North Arm, can we get a high-level idea in terms of what the cost would be if we did it MSA? Because I think that, we've talked a little bit about it, that hill is going to be a huge, huge impact if we have to take that down, which it sounds like MSA standards, we would. So if we did it MSA dollars, what would, I mean, do we have any kind of, or if we didn't do it MSA and did it with general dollars, I mean, not MSA dollars, what would it cost? If we could kind of have some kind of conversation regarding that? And the reason I bring that up is because we've had this discussion about Morningside or Morning View, that neighborhood, and if, that's going to cost a lot of money. So if we have to bond for that, maybe we want to think about, maybe think about bonding for North Arm at the same time if we don't do MSA. So MSA, so North Arm, I'm visualizing, and I could be wrong, that it was going to, it's going to be similar to Game Farm. When we did Game Farm, we looked at the impacts and the cost to do it with MSA funding, so, and the cost versus not using MSA. And we decided not to do MSA because of the cost and impacts. That might be the case with North Arm, and I just want to take a look at it. Is the council interested in?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So getting back to these corings, I'm fine with this. I just thought I, we, we should throw that out there, so.
Yeah.
Okay. So any questions regarding this request in corings? Otherwise, staff is recommending authorizing WSB to complete the 22 pavement forensic study. I believe it was $5,075. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Mortenson. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Chumperland. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So next, we'll move on to this agreement for professional services for the overlay project. And that would be for all of the ones listed. Okay.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, just kind of a continuation of that same discussion. Again, and also a continuation of our discussion on February 7th. Before you this evening, in the, I guess we'll start with the, kind of the cover memo. You know, the, the main project area for the 2022 overlay project is the Painter Road, Painters Creek Drive, and Painters Circle area. That was discussed on the 7th. The proposed rehabilitation method is a two-inch millon overlay. It's, it's right in the PCI range, that that would be the preferred pavement rehabilitation method. We do need to take the cores that we just discussed to verify that, but we do think we're going to be able to go forward with the two-inch millon overlay on those streets. It's also discussed to perform a millon overlay with a Texas under seal on Game Farm Road. That was a discussion had on the 7th as well. And so as you read through the packet, in, in 2022, the remaining funds, approximately about $450,000 in the road maintenance fund. And so because we didn't have numbers at the February 7th meeting in terms of, we switched a little bit up with that 22, 2022 overlay area. We did just want to present them both here tonight for council consideration and discussion. The Painters Creek area would fall right about in line, just under the remaining budget. And we didn't want to leave Game Farm Road out, so that is included as well. And as Mr. Peters alluded to that evening, we do want to use that area as performing kind of a test pilot, or a pilot study for a pavement rehabilitation called the Texas Under Seal, which is a chip seal that goes down before you put the new pavement. And it's supposed to help lengthen the time that you see cracking. So it just makes you feel like, you know, you've got a better road product where you don't see those cracks on a millon overlay come through right away. So I think that's a great stretch. It does exceed the remaining budget, at least in terms of the budget numbers we use at this time. And so that's included here, but can easily be left out by council's motion on, on what we proceed with in terms of design, survey, design, and then bidding. So I can take any questions on the project, proposed project areas or the proposal for the 2022 overlay project, but the fees are summarized on the third page there. And we would be able to begin survey just as soon as the snow melts, essentially. And it's a much more minimal survey than you'd expect with a full-depth reclaim project or a full reconstruction project. We just want to verify grades and make sure we're not, or we're handling any drainage issues that exist there, as well as rehabilitating the pavement.
Questions, comments?
The only question I have is, last year, didn't we run out of overlay funds because everything cost more when we went to do the actual projects? And because of COVID? But do we expect anything like that again this year? Supply chains, material?
I don't quite, thank you for the question. I don't quite recall running out of overlay funds. Do you have, what project exactly are you referring to?
The main project costs more because of all the COVID stuff.
Okay.
The overlay, it costs more, the overlay. We just did the one overlay.
We didn't end up doing the overlays that were planned.
I see.
Because my question, we ran out of funds, so we didn't end up doing the overlays that were planned. And my question is whether or not that, what changes, if any, would that make on this year's projects?
Okay. I, I think I'm following, yeah. So we, we ended up not going forward with any overlay projects last year because the main, the main street improvement project was over budget. So this year, we, we do have a pretty healthy budget remaining of 450. The budget numbers we use for millon overlay is listed in the, in the report there. It's about 30 bucks a square yard. And with the close proximity of the 2021 street improvement project, there's a chance we, we do get pretty good bid prices. We're going to be later than the optimal window, but it's a millon overlay project with, it's going to have very minimal utilities, if at all. We're going to take, check the condition of the storm sewer. There's some culverts out there. So I think it'll be a really attractive project. So at this time, I think, you know, with that neighborhood, we're going to want to do all the streets. We're not going to want to parse it out. So let's just hope that it comes in under that 450 remaining that we have. And with a conservative budget that we have right now, I think that we should. All right. So is, is the concern if, if we bid this project for that neighborhood and it's over budget, will it go forward or? Okay.
Well, here's, here's my take on that. We have 447 remaining. You're estimating 426 to do the Painter Road, Painter Creek, Painter Drive, Painter Circle. That really doesn't give us a lot of wiggle room. So I guess what I'm thinking, I don't think we should do or even then consider doing Game Farm right now. Either we do Game Farm and don't do the other, or we do the others and don't do Game Farm. Because we know, even if it came 10% under estimate, that's, that's only another 69,000. So that's not going to get us to the 279. So I'm thinking we should just then concentrate on the Painter Road. The, the other thing that we could do is, again, maybe in our future discussions when we talk about Morningside and North Arm, if we're going to be bonding, maybe this would be a good time to do Game Farm. Or we do Game Farm with Morningside because of the close proximity again.
Yeah, I, I agree. You know, when we were talking at the 7th, we kind of had those maps. We just started moving things around, and so I just wanted to make sure we didn't leave that out because it was discussed. But you can tell that it's not within the budget at the estimates, so.
So I guess there's no use, in my opinion, there's no use in spending engineering dollars when we know we can't do it.
Sure.
So.
The only wiggle room we'd maybe have a little bit is we had some assessments, like the people on the 2021 street projects would have had to pay by November 15th, and when the original budget was done and being processed, you know, some of that money wouldn't have been factored into that million dollars or so. You know, that we have 600,000 on the 2022 project roughly.
Right.
And another 450 now on overlay. So that's where we, you know, we ended up doing a, you know, the budget of a million, million fifty. We, I think with some of those assessments that come, came in, even at a little higher rate than I thought, we might have a little. I don't think we have 240,000, you know, we might be part of the way there. So I guess that would be the only potential reason to go forward, but it still would have to come in at a pretty good under budget, which may not be attainable, so.
Okay, there's that, and then there's what, the art funds possibility? No.
Well, depending, I guess, yeah, as we move forward with that, the art of funds, whether we, and where we want to, yeah, the potential bucket.
And when will we know all this?
Not tonight.
Too early tonight, yeah, so. Too early tonight, yes, so.
So, Adam, with the gas prices, how does that affect the courts that we'll be getting at?
I'm sure it's gonna be more, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Mortensen. So, kind of across the board, this year, we're seeing high batuminous prices already prior to the recent news. I can go and check more recent bids. I know Ms. Fowski just opened bids on a project in Shakopee, which isn't exactly in this area, but I don't know if you recall what the batuminous prices were like. They're, they're up about ten percent this year before the news, what's happening abroad. So, we're anticipating that, and we can certainly kind of, as we work through design, we'll be refining the estimate as we get closer and be looking at more recent bids, you know, things that are bidding now, things that are bidding in April before. If you look at the project schedule, we have a little bit of time before we bid it, so we'll kind of keep an eye on what's going on. But this most recent stuff, I'm not, I'm not sure how that's affecting the
So, I'm, I'm thinking if it comes in more than the four, four twenty-seven or something, I mean, we're not gonna have a lot of wiggle room, so. Even, even with, you know, the additional assessments if they come in, you know.
I'd say it's safer to probably just do the painters.
Yeah. Okay. Other questions or comments? Otherwise, the engineering fees for the painter's area would be forty-seven thousand nine twenty-five? Okay, so is there other questions or comments? Okay, so is there a motion then to approve engineering fees for the overlay city projects in the Painter Road area in the amount of forty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-five?
So moved.
Thank you. Ms. Refkin, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Trumperland. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with a aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll look forward to those bids. With that, we'll move on to administrative items, staff reports. Are there any staff reports? Do we know, do we have a planning commission meeting?
John.
And John is
Do we have one?
Yes.
Okay, March twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Okay, I'm there.
Thank you, John. And park commission meeting?
We do not.
Nothing, all right, thank you. Any other? Ellie, do we have an update on, on our positions or?
Um, well, I'll begin advertising for the CSO position, so we'll be in talks with the personnel committee. And then we do have that conditional offer letter that I sent to the personnel committee.
Right.
And we're moving forward with that at this time. PD is working on the background, so.
For the officer, yeah, one of the officer positions.
Correct, one of the officer positions. We've only had two applications so far.
Yeah.
And we interviewed both, so we're hoping we get some more. But we think this is a really good candidate.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
All right, council reports. I'll start with Pam.
Um, I attended the planning committee meeting on the twenty eighth, and we discussed the variances that were in our package today.
Okay.
How's India report?
Okay.
Um, I continue to work with the WSB Center, and their annual meeting is this coming Thursday. And I'm helping them develop a brochure for membership.
Nice, and I know Pam, you'll be attending that meeting as well. It's a special annual board meeting, so thank you very much for doing that. And Kathleen, you and I attended a meeting. I'll let you go ahead.
Lisa, myself, Brian, Gary, and Miles with SCH talked on Thursday of last week. Um, discussing the, basically the self-water treatment plant, what's going on with it, the issues. Um, we discussed the anthracite, which has been ordered. We have polymer, which we're gonna add to the plant. We have a five-gallon pail of it, which should last years, Miles said. Apparently, you need a very, very tiny amount. Um, and then we are Gary and, and Miles, John is the
A Tom, Tom?
John.
John, phone, phone, yeah.
They are getting the feed line, so they can put the polymer in the water, which should help substantially with the quality of water and decreasing the amount of backwash. We discussed the valves that were the sixteen thousand dollar, and we're gonna hold off on those until we see what happens with the anthracite being replenished, and then they have to recharge the green sand, because it's no longer green, it's gray. Which I didn't know that could happen, but. So, pending that, we talked about when, if we get the valves, it only gives us an additional forty-five minutes for backwashing. So, it's not saving a ton of time when we need to backwash. So, pending how the anthracite and the polymer works, we may not need the valves. So, hold off on those till we see how this works. We should know how this works within a week, Miles said. So, definitely plenty of time to find out before summer watering season starts. Um, we discussed if we need the valve, we'll make sure everything is cut beforehand, that all the bolts work, that there shouldn't be any issues hooking them in if we do decide to go forward with that later. We talked about capacity at the south plant. There have been tweaks made to the north plant to increase the capacity from five hundred gallons per minute to seven fifty. So, we discussed if we could possibly do some tweaks to the southern plant to get it up to twelve fifty, because both wells are pumping over six hundred. So, they're gonna look into that also.
And they, they think with this tweaking that we're doing now, that it's, it's basically gonna be at a thousand. And I know that some people have asked, well, why wasn't it running at a thousand? And a lot of this is operational, so that, a lot of these things are just operational. And one of the issues, of course, being that this is kind of a new things for, for the city, and we've never had to run it at full capacity. That was one of the issues. And it was only when this summer, because this is a very first summer with the heat and the drought and all of that, that we, the staff realized it wasn't running at full capacity. So, that's, that was what kind of caused, caused us to say, well, how come it isn't? And that's when Miles and his team came in and looked at it, and as Kathleen pointed out, these are the things they said you should be doing, and it'll run much more efficiently, and it will run, you'll get longer runtimes, so you're not backwashing as much, which saves water, and then it'll run, it'll, it should be running at full capacity. And that's when the valves will come into play. Maybe we can get it, he thought maybe we can even get it a little higher than that thousand. But we, they'll have to see when we, when we do this. So, we felt, so the reason, so I, I needed to understand this situation after our last council meeting. I really needed to understand the situation a little bit better, and I wanted to have a, a one-on-one meeting with SCH. And, and I thought, well, I can't invite the whole council, but I could invite one person, and Kathleen was available. I invited her. And that's why the two of us met with them, and I thought if we can sit down and ask them the questions that, that are really kind of in the back of our minds and really get, really hands-on, kind of nitty-gritty, maybe if we understand it better, we can then share that information with you. And I think it was a very good meeting, because I think I went away understanding it much better, and I think Kathleen did too. So, most of these things that we're doing right now are basically operational in enhancements and maintenance. And so, we, and staff felt that we have a CIP for maintenance, and that it would come out as CIP. And it wasn't, it wasn't a design default.
I did specifically ask why the plants were built differently, why one has a valve and one doesn't. Miles didn't know. Um, he didn't know if it was due to the space that's available at the south plant, just because we don't have a pump room there. They could have been thinking save space or lower cost or something, but he didn't know exactly why they were built differently. It's not rare, but it kind of, it seemed to me that it struck him as a little bit odd that they were a little different, but it's not unheard of. He didn't have a straight answer to that about why they were different. Um, the good news is the feed lines are available, so we don't wait, like, we just order them and they'll show up there, not backorder, if there's any issues with that. So, that was the good thing.
Right, and we should know before, before the next sprinkling season starts. He, he, yeah, like Kathleen said, it should, we should be, yeah, we should be running at, at a thousand at least before then. And then we'll know whether or not we want to add the valves. And that's just to get, I think it's longer runtimes, or not, not really, it's the backwash.
And so, you can backwash one and not the other, but Miles said that only saves us forty-five minutes, so not a ton of time.
Right.
So, it comes down to cost benefit of sixteen thousand dollars for valves or forty-five minutes. So, we felt best to wait and see what we get with the
Right.
other changes.
There are multiple backwashes per week.
Correct, yeah. I think, I don't know, we, every, well, Gary could answer that better. Yeah, there, there are multiple backwashes every week, right?
There should be with these enhancements, longer durations between, instead of having to do it every twelve, thirteen hours. It should be every twenty, twenty-four, thirty hours even.
Right, so that, and that's what they'll be monitoring too, is how long the runtimes will be before they have to do the backwash. And be, and if they can do longer runtimes, see, one of the problems is with, with this polymer that Kathleen mentioned is that should also help keep the filters cleaner. So, that's, and the, the green sand and the other, all this other stuff, that should also help with that as well. So, you'll get better quali, water quality, and you'll get longer runtimes too, so, without backwashing.
One of the things you may want to consider highlighting is saving one hundred and ninety thousand gallons of water a week.
Yes, thank you. Yes.
That's a lot of water.
Yeah, right. So, all of, all those things considered, I think we'll, we're recommending holding off on the valves for right now. And then we did ask, well, if we did do the valves, how are they available? Gary seemed to think that they were readily available, so it wouldn't be like a long wait time to get those if we wanted to do them. So, that's
I do have one question. When a treatment plant is built, do they test to see if it can run to full pa, a capacity?
They usually pilot it, Miles said, because of when the wells were completed on the south plant. That's why they didn't pilot the south one before. They did pilot the north one.
They pilot the wells. It's the wells that they pilot. Because if your wells aren't pumping, if your wells can't pump the five hundred, you have two wells. If each well can't pump at least five hundred gallons a minute, you don't have a thousand gallon treatment plant. So, and as Kathleen said, what happened is the wells at the south plant were drilled at the same time the plant was built. And for whatever reason, then they didn't pilot, they call it, they didn't test them. And so, but we do know that they can pump at least six hundred gallons a minute each. Now, the north ones, the wells were already there, so they piloted those and determined that, yes, those can easily pump what we need. But I don't think they ever ran the plants. They didn't.
I think Miles stated, was pretty sure they would have put it through their paces right after the plant was put up to speed. But I think the issue that keeps them getting muddied is that the plants always have been able to operate at a thousand gallons per minute. It was just the quality of the water was suffering that basically when we backwash or shut them down, and then, and then that's where this number of seven fifty or eight hundred, that's was a, the wrong narrative to put out there was the, it, these enhancements needed to be made to increase the quality of water so you could efficiently do a thousand gallons per minute and provide that to our, our water users. That's where we're at.
Yeah.
Yep.
Right, we could have been pumping more probably, but then you end up with brown water.
Or water quality.
Or not.
Probably use a lot more calls.
Yeah.
Would the valves allow you to have, take one house service and backwash them?
Right, right.
Eliminate the water quality, potential for water quality problem?
It just eliminates, I think, one, one filter keeps filtering, if you will, so.
It would, but if, pending what Miles said with the anthracite and the polymers, we might not need that extra time. We might get the water quality without using the valves. So, that's why we're just gonna wait and see instead of spending that.
Right. And we, and just FYI, for those of you here, we are moving forward with the wells, test wells. And if you want to wait afterwards, I want to show you what we're talking about in terms of the plant approvals, just so you can see. So, I think you needed a right of entry, right? So, we've, do we have that or?
We're working on it.
We're working on it.
Verbally.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got a verbal okay, and then I just sent some documentation over to M and I on Friday.
Okay.
For his review.
And have you gone out, or where are we at with bids on the well drilling, or are we gonna just go with trout? Or what are we doing there?
Well, we, you have to go out for, for bids for that process, but it would, at this point, we would wanted to make sure we could secure the right of entry from M and I homes before going in
Okay.
through the quote, the, the bid process.
And are you, are you gonna bring back bids, or how, when, when will the council approve the?
That's a good question, Madam Mayor. So, the next step in the process, we would get the right of entry from M and I, and then get the, the bid package out for bids for the test wells.
Should just keep quotes, right? The dollar must be low, or am I wrong? What are we looking at for the test?
I think
Quotes.
I think it's bids, but it's not, because we're not doing the four twenty-nine process, we have the shorter duration time for it. But I, I'll check on that, because I think you're right. I think we did quotes the first time.
As long as it's under a hundred and seventy-five thousand, it'd be a full package.
Yep, that sounds right. So, um, so we would do quotes, and then the next time the council would see it is after we've solicited quotes and have quotes from qualified contractors.
Okay.
To award the contract. Um, they have, there's different, Madam Mayor, members of council, there's, there's different well drillers that have different, differing equipment. Are you talking about the well driller that can drill both wells in the same thing?
Right.
Yeah, Greg said that was trout at the last meeting. They had the equipment, so they could just drill one well into both aquifers. Yep, and, and with the test wells, we've identified two test wells, one in the Tunnel City, Wanawak, and one in the Mount Simon Hankley for the test wells. And then the final well would be the one, so. Because you can't use, you're not using your test wells as the final well location, and so that it's
But it's, it'll be close.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, all right. So, when, when would you expect to have that, I mean, just kind of a rough figure to have it back to the council for?
If we can get, if we can get that right of entry, I would anticipate in a month.
Okay, all right. I'm sure M and I would be willing to let us to do it, I guess.
That was their indication when I spoke.
Yeah, all right. Okay. Kathleen, anything else? Okay, so, yeah, I attended that same meeting, and also had the pleasure of meeting with Jasper Krugel, our soon-to-be new administrator, so, again. And I'm sure he'll be reaching out to all of you and wanting to meet with you individually. And then also, I will be attending the Northwest League meeting on Wednesday. I think that's it. With that, we can be adjourned. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. So, Ms. Mortensen made that motion, and Ms. Refkin seconded that. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes.